Okay, I'd like to bring this meeting back to order. Before us, we have an open work session and Sheriff Mike Lewis is with us to discuss potential resolution on a Second Amendment sanctuary. Sheriff?
Good afternoon. As a lifelong resident of Wycomico County and an avid hunter and fisherman, and now about to begin my 37th year as a law enforcement officer, my views are certainly stronger than others. I will continue to enforce all state and federal laws as I've sworn to do. However, like many proud Americans, I oppose any law or regulation that further infringes or restricts a citizen's right to protect himself or his family, arguably the real interpretation of our Second Amendment rights. And I will continue to work with Governor Hogan and our local delegation on issues regarding public safety, such as closing background loopholes to keep guns out of the hands of dangerous criminals, working with our prosecutors to vigorously prosecute those that commit crimes with firearms, and making schools safer by enhancing security and working with school administrators in planning for critical incidents. Also believe in increasing access to mental health services for at-risk patients. These are all common sense points to discuss and which identify the real issues associated with gun control that do not infringe on a citizen's right to bear arms under our Second Amendment. As a 36-year veteran of law enforcement, 22 years as Maryland State Trooper, now 13 and a half years as a sheriff in Wycomico County, I have a pretty distinguished career in both gun and drug enforcement cases across the state of Maryland, with thousands, not hundreds, of street and highway arrests that I'm personally responsible for. So I do feel qualified to be here today and say what I'm about to say. Due to Maryland's systemic lack of vigorously prosecuting of gun crimes under former Governor Martin O'Malley's administration and his subsequent abolishment of the death penalty, there remains tremendous incentive for criminals to move to Maryland. Our law-abiding citizens who are now discouraged from legally purchasing a firearm due to the passage of legislative hurdles, which make it extremely difficult to purchase or legally obtain that firearm, can only stand by and watch criminals flourish in the profession of terrorizing our innocent citizens. New gun laws that have repeatedly been introduced in Maryland and passed are nothing more than feel-good proposals that have done absolutely nothing more than impact our local law-abiding citizens and undoubtedly make law-abiding citizens more vulnerable and victims of those criminals who will continue to steal, rob, rape, and murder while holding a firearm to your neighbor's head. The Second Amendment protects an individual right that existed before the creation of any government, any form of government. The Declaration of Independence made clear that all human beings are endowed with certain unalienable rights and that governments are created to protect those rights. An unalienable right to freedom from violence and harm and the right to self-defense both exist before and outside of secular government. The right to keep and bear arms simply implements the unalienable right to an individual's self-defense against aggression of any kind. The Second Amendment refers to the right of the people, not the state, as a pre-existing right that government must respect. The United States Supreme Court in U.S. versus Yurgeitas indicated that the word "people" in the Second Amendment referred to individuals, not states. This was not a holding or ruling of the law, but simply an observation by the court. The language of the Second Amendment prohibits the federal government from infringing on this right of the people. There is nothing ambiguous about "shall not" be infringed. The language of the Second Amendment is about as clear as the First Amendment prohibiting Congress from infringing on the right to freedom of speech. That's why I'm here today. That's why those who came before me were here today. We do have a right to freedom of speech that's never been challenged and never will be, but now they want to challenge the Second Amendment. We also have a freedom of press and freedom of religious expression. There is no logical reason to read the Second Amendment as a weak statement while treating the First Amendment as a strong protector of rights. The Second Amendment protects a fundamental right and should be read broadly because it implements the right of self-defense. Self-defense is the ultimate right of all individuals to preserve life. The rights to a free press, free speech, assembly, and religion are extremely important, but none of them matters at all if you can't defend your own life against aggression. None of them matters very much when an evil government is fully armed and its citizens are disarmed. The Second Amendment protects a fundamental right and should be read broadly because it implements the right of self-defense and its ultimate right to preserve our lives. Nationally, we've seen a huge surge by individual states to further restrict or encroach on one's Second Amendment right to keep and bear arms, causing many locally elected officials throughout the nation to say enough is enough. One has to look no farther than our neighboring state of Virginia to see what happened during this last legislative session several months ago. As Sheriff of Wycomico County, what excuse could I offer to any of my constituents for not helping them or protecting them from abuse or crimes by their own state or federal government? I've been asked before, how can you not enforce additional gun laws or gun restrictions if passed in the law? I'm more than willing to sacrifice my future for doing the right thing for the citizens of Wycomico County. That's all I've known and that's all I've done for 36 years now. However, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King said it best when he stated, "I submit that an individual who breaks a law that conscious tells him is unjust and who willingly accepts the penalty of imprisonment in order to arouse the conscience of the community over its injustice is in reality expressing the highest respect for the law." If we want a good and strong America, then law enforcement must be an integral part in doing so. That's why I'm here today. I won't shrink from my duty or responsibility merely because of political correctness. If we do not uphold the Constitution and the principles of our founding fathers, then we are no better than any other country that has enslaved and continues to enslave and impoverish its citizens for their leader's power and personal gain. Please listen to that, let that scene come for a second. The Second Amendment was meant for every American regardless of race, ethnicity, or gender. Every American has a duty and responsibility to protect themselves and their families, and having the ability to buy, possess, keep, and bear firearms is one's fundamental right to self-protection. It is the equalizer for the weak and a neutralizer against the strong. Our country revolves around our Bill of Rights. Our country revolves around one's First Amendment right to free speech, and our country revolves around one's unalienable right to keep and bear arms. John F. Kennedy once said, "Those who make peaceful revolution impossible will make violent revolution inevitable." None of us in this room wants that. So I'm here today to say that the regrettable catastrophe that we are now a part of is the fact that our American republic is being replaced every day by corrupt system of political correctness. The founding fathers of this great nation warned us repeatedly, and their writing and their intent, to avoid gun control. A limited central government was the goal as the framers of our country knew that freedom couldn't exist with an all-powerful, overreaching government. It is a mathematical certainty that the bigger the government, the smaller our freedom. We can't continue to have huge government and abundant freedom simultaneously. I swore a solemn oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Maryland, and I'm prepared to stay in my ground with my constituents for the preservation of its traditional interpretation. Let's pass this Second Amendment resolution. Let's let our constituents know that while we recognize such passage is largely ceremonial, largely symbolic, we also want to send a strong message to Annapolis, to the state of Maryland, and to our nation that we stand with our people, we stand with our communities, and we stand firmly on the rule of law. Thank you all so much for allowing me to be here today.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I've got some questions.
Mr. McCain?
Some of your comments you made, Mike. For example, you said, "The laws are keeping us from..." I mean, you know very well, I'm a hunter. So, you know, I'm an avid hunter and, you know, people sitting here at this table, you know, I'm probably affected more by gun laws than any of the sitting here, you know, being the hunter that I am, and I support the Second Amendment and obviously support the Constitution. But you also said that current laws are keeping us, law-abiding citizens, from buying guns. I mean, I can walk right out of here right now and go buy, you know, a new shotgun, I could go buy a new handgun. So what law is keeping me from buying guns?
Our elderly population repeatedly come into my office, Council McCain, all the time because they have no clue how to apply for an HQL. They have owned guns, they have bought guns, they have traded guns their entire lives. But based on the Firearms Safety Act of 2013, it now virtually makes it impossible for most of our eastern shore men and women without proper education to go take a handgun qualification, license course, when they can load, when they can aim, and they can shoot a gun by far better than the instructors that are teaching these classes. They've been doing it their whole lives. But now they can no longer legally go to any sporting goods store and buy a handgun or a semi-automatic weapon without participating and successfully completing the HQL course. Yes, they can go to Furfence and Feathers. Yes, they can go to Winks and buy shotgun, and they can buy rifle. But they cannot buy a handgun, the most common weapon in anyone's home to protect their families, it's a handgun. They can no longer do that. And they refuse to go through the course because they don't fundamentally understand it. But yet they've bought, they possess, they've traded, and shot weapons their entire lives. But these individuals now are elderly, and to send them through an HQL course that's costing $300 to $500 for a course, it has discouraged most of them from lawful gun ownership today. I see it and hear it every day. I was in the home last Thursday, no, last Wednesday, of an 84-year-old resident in this county. Eighty-four years old. She has guns. Her husband passed away over two decades ago. She wanted me to show her how to handle and load a weapon. I spent over two hours at her house showing her how to do this. She says, "I have no idea what I'm going to do." She said, "I can't get rid of the guns. I can't take them to a dealership. What am I going to do with my guns? I want to be able to protect myself." We have responded to her home twice in the last 30 days because of prowler reports, someone banging on the window, terrorizing her. She's terrified. She's scared to death. But she can't buy a new gun. She wanted a smaller gun. But what her husband left her were bigger guns. She can't go out illegally and buy a smaller gun now. She's 84 years old. She can't do it.
Well, once again, you said she can't legally buy that gun.
She can't legally buy a handgun.
And she goes through that process, she can legally buy a handgun.
Not at 84 years old, she's not going to sit in the classroom for eight hours a day and go out on the range with a bunch of young men and women. She's not going to do it. Not at 84 years of age.
Yeah, I'm not getting that, but anyhow. The, I guess another question I have is, you know, getting back to my comment earlier, once again, I support the Second Amendment, but I'm a Wycomico County Councilman. We don't determine the constitutionality of laws by any stretch of the imagination. You know, there's a process to challenge the constitutionality of laws. You know, I encourage anybody who has issues with gun laws, yes, they should be at the State House in Annapolis when, you know, laws they think are unreasonable are being proposed. I encourage them to be there. I mean, that happens every year, and just not about guns. I mean, there are silly laws for environmental laws and things to do with education and things to do with business. I mean, that's happens every year, and that's why people go to Annapolis to lobby against those laws. And if a law is passed that you don't think is constitutional, there is a process. That's what the courts of the land are for. The courts determine the constitutionality of laws, not the Wycomico County. Councilman Bill McCain doesn't determine whether a law is constitutional, and the Sheriff of Wycomico County doesn't determine the constitutionality of laws. You stated in your comments, you took an oath to uphold the laws of the state of Maryland. That's part of the same oath that we take when we take the oath to uphold the Constitution and uphold the Constitution of Maryland and the laws of the state. I don't get to pick which ones I like and which ones I don't like.
I made it very clear, I have always supported state law, I have always supported federal law, and I will continue to do that. I recognize we don't determine what is constitutionally sound or not. We have to abide by the law, and we have to obey the law. But I also made it very clear, what we're trying to do here today in passing this Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution is making it clear to our constituents that we recognize it to be ceremonial and we recognize it to be largely symbolic. We also recognize their voices in Annapolis. You and I both know, Mr. McCain, our voices mean nothing in Annapolis. It's Prince George's County, Montgomery County, Baltimore City, and Baltimore County that carry the state in everything. They don't care what you think. They don't care what I think. It doesn't matter what we think down here.
Then why are we talking about it? If that's the real issue, then, I mean, it's not like there's going to be a bill that's going to go before Annapolis and suddenly they go, "Wait a minute, hold on. Wycomico County passed the resolution, stop all gun laws, that's it. Like, you know what, Wycomico County is right." It doesn't work that way. I mean, this is a nice effort. I'm a proud gun owner myself, proudly support the Second Amendment, but realistically, this is not something that, you know, that is actually going to do anything. If anything, we need to encourage folks to, like Mr. McCain said, go to Annapolis. If there is a law that is unconstitutional, if someone suspects it, we have a process for that. You go and you challenge that law. What we need to do is encourage everyone who has reached out, have all of us band together, and go challenge any particular law in court, because that's how you actually get it done.
You know, Mr. Hastings, I have encouraged everybody to get involved in the process. I continue to do that every single year during our legislative session. While there are thousands who have shown up in Annapolis to oppose any further gun laws, any further encroachment or restrictions on one's Second Amendment right to bear arms, thousands have shown up. I can count on one hand the number of been there to testify in support of it, and it still passes every single time. They don't care what we think. Our fortunes are not heard down there on the eastern shore. So I think it sends a strong message to our constituents as locally elected officials that, yes, we agree, the Second Amendment shall be preserved, it should be preserved, and it's a, I've said it several times, I'll say it again, I recognize it to be ceremonial, I recognize it to be largely symbolic, but it sends a strong message that we recognize the importance of the true values of those living in our county that have elected us to our positions as we sit here today.
Yeah, well, but Mike, you're asking us, and I'll say this again, we're Wycomico County Councilmen. You just said, "We don't determine the constitutionality of laws."
But we also recognize the importance and how important this is to our constituents. That's why they are passing the center legislation throughout the country today, especially in our neighboring state of Virginia, after what they've just went through.
But this resolution isn't asking us to say the Second Amendment's important. It doesn't say that. You know, it's saying, you know, this is a resolution of us declaring that, you know, we're making this constitutional decision as to the constitutionality of the Second Amendment. That's not, you know, and I don't know who wrote this. I mean, who wrote the resolution, by the way?
I believe Mr.
I mean, on the bit early, if you can tell us, I mean, I don't know who wrote our resolutions in front of us.
Yeah, it was my understanding Paul Wilbur worked with the sheriff in drafting that language.
It's totally incorrect, for starters. I mean, almost line by line. I mean, you know, it starts right off, you're quoting Heller in here. I don't know who took this out of Heller. You know, they took one sentence out of Heller, and Heller's a pretty lengthy opinion, but it took the one sentence out of Heller saying that, you know, because Heller says, yes, Supreme Court says, "You can use, you know, common use for defending yourself." You know, it's basically what Heller said. But Heller went on at length and said, "But it doesn't give all rights..." You know, they were very clear to say, "It doesn't mean you could have any kind of weapon, any number of weapons." They made that very clear in Heller. So Heller goes way beyond this.
And neither are we in this passage of this resolution. We're not giving people the right to possess any weapon.
We got Heller right in here. We took the one sentence out of Heller.
We've already taken, we've already have state laws that say we can't possess a number of weapons, a plethora of weapons.
Exactly.
I'm not asking you to do that. I'm asking the council to preserve what we have in place to send a strong message to Annapolis, to the state of Maryland, that we recognize the importance of the Second Amendment. That's all this does. It's very clear that's all this does. I'm not asking for any additional passage of law.
It does actually go into specifically imposing taxes on firearms and accessories. Do we have the authority to do that? Yep, I mean, if not, which, according to the Robert Taylor, Bob Taylor's actually was on this, according to his memo, we don't have that authority. If we don't have that authority, then, you know, we could basically get rid of 1A. Then that leaves the other two, which is the county should not maintain independent registration tracking. That's fine, sure. We don't have the authority or the ability to do that anyhow. 1C, the county should not impose independent measures for consecration, firearms, yeah, that's fine. But this is not as simple as a, "We think Second Amendment rights are great." This is something a little more in-depth and, you know...
Let me ask you a question. If you recognize that the county doesn't have the authority to maintain independent registration and tracking of firearms, firearm accessories, or ammunition, why not recognize that the county has no authority to impose any tax on firearms, firearm accessories, ammunition, not common all other goods and services?
Yeah, I think we could actually amend this language to actually make it sound much better than it currently does.
I, you know, if there's means by which we could, you know, seek advice from legal, that's always part of what we would do to make sure that the document that we're actually approving is a legal document, that's fine. You have to understand, though, is that I look at this as a statement, you know, similar to what Sheriff Lewis has said. At some point in time, my concern is always that the state is constantly encroaching upon our local autonomy over and over again, and I think they do so with a lot of different regulations, and I see from what they've been trying to do over the last couple of years, they're beginning to do this in reference to gun rights, et cetera. It is becoming more difficult to buy guns, and I think, in all honesty, in my personal opinion, is the people who are trying to buy guns through the legal process are most likely not the ones that are going to turn around and shoot somebody two weeks later or a month later. And so you have to ask, why are you continuing to make it more difficult to allow people to defend themselves? I think that's the reason that this is on our table today. We're concerned about our local autonomy, we're concerned about the overregulations on the part of the state, and, you know, at some point in time, you have to send a clear message. And if it's symbolic, it is symbolic, but you have to send a clear message together with all the other counties. And before you know it, you have somewhat of a, think of a movement where maybe Annapolis will, you know, you say, "Why is Wycomico doing it?" Well, you know, in collaboration with all the other counties, Annapolis may just, you know, sit back and go, "Wait a minute, guys, how far are we going to go with this?" And they begin to recognize where the pushback starts. So, again, it's symbolic.
But John, we could, so that's regular letter. I mean...
You don't like letters, Bill. You don't like letters. I haven't even get you to...
You know I don't like letters, exactly. Because they don't, you know, but this is a resolution, once again, you know, it's a resolution, you know, where we're determining whether this is, you know, laws, the Second Amendment and laws that Maryland tries to pass, and laws that have been, quote, "been passed." You know, we're basically saying, you know, hypothetical laws, we're going to determine their constitutionality as a county council. And I hate to say it, but that's just ridiculous. Are we going to do this now and every, you know, it's a political agenda, whether you're for or against these issues. You know, there's people that are for, there's people against. So we're going to pick sides for now here out and do resolutions, you know. Once again, that's not in our charter. That's not one of the things we took an oath to do, you know, to pick, you know, political agendas. You know, once again, to me, this has nothing to do with the Second Amendment. I'm sitting here as a councilperson, you know, basically being, if I voted just what's written right here, then I totally just, you know, contradicted my oath I took as a councilperson, because it says I want to uphold the laws of the state of Maryland, and I'm going to uphold the Constitution of the state of Maryland. This says, "No, I'm not." You know, and we don't get to pick and choose. We don't determine the constitutionality. I encourage people that, you know, that are firm believers that, you know, against gun laws and so forth, go to Annapolis. You know, there's a process, you know, and if a law is passed in Annapolis and you don't agree with that, there's, you go to the courts. The courts make that determination, not the Wycomico County Council, plain and simple.
Mr. Holloway?
You know, I'm going to agree with John about this, symbolic, and Mike, Bill, and I don't want to get into big debate about this, because I know we disagree, but you said you could go out here tomorrow or today and buy a gun anytime you wanted to.
Correct.
That doesn't mean you can go buy a gun from anybody you wanted to. You know, a lot of people right today are having problems. Mike was just talking about this 84-year-old woman, maybe her husband passed away, she's got these guns. If she went out to sell these guns to her son-in-law, to her neighbor, she'd be a criminal. And that's what's happening with these gun laws. They keep chipping away at them and chipping away at them. And so that happens, am I correct, Mike?
You're correct. And if she loaned a gun to somebody so they could go hunting behind her house, she'd be a criminal. It's ridiculous.
Yeah, and that's... It is ridiculous. And I realize that this is symbolic. We've said that, everybody here at the table has said it today. But at some point in time, you've got to stand up and be heard, and the citizens, from what I'm hearing, and I know there's people on both sides of this, I understand that. But I grew up in a rural area, and we were on Zoom the other night, and there were some statements made that I received a little criticism about. And the Sheriff's Department, the state police do a great job, but they can't be to my house in 10 minutes, and they can't be to a lot of people's houses. In some cases, they can't be to businesses in 10 minutes. And for somebody to be denied the right to own a firearm if they're legally allowed to, even if it's the time factor. Say somebody goes, "We're talking today about people opening businesses back up." Say they open a business and the person that's running the business wants a firearm. Well, they might open the business tomorrow, but it might be two months before they can get a firearm to protect themselves. In that time period, somebody could come in and rob them, shoot them, harm them, you know.
Mr. McCain, can I use a brief analysis? We have jurisdictions.
But you just made, you just made a couple, it just simply aren't true. I can go buy a firearm today.
Yeah, you can. I told you you could.
Right, but you just said, "But you'll open a business tomorrow, it'll take me two months."
No, 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 I didn't say that to you. I said, "You could go buy a firearm today, but you might not be able to buy a firearm from somebody that you want to buy a firearm off of, because you would make it illegal if you bought that firearm from them."
And I follow the laws of the state of Maryland, and I can follow these laws and...
So if I wanted to go to my neighbors and an elderly person said, "Joe," you know, "We don't deal in guns where we work, okay? That's against, you know, we don't have the licenses, so we don't do it." But if I wanted to go to my neighbor and say they wanted to sell their guns, I can't buy them. They have made that against the law, whether I wanted to keep them for myself or give them to a neighbor or a friend, you know. So it's made, it really has made criminals out of people that, if they do it...
We have jurisdictions and municipalities right here in Maryland today, and these municipalities are run by attorneys, and they have refused not only to abide by federal law and state law regarding immigration issues, they have declared their respective jurisdictions and counties as sanctuary counties.
I'm well aware of that.
And, but, exactly. But are they not violating federal law? Are they not violating state law?
Yes.
But they do it every day. You know why? Because they interpret the law differently. I don't disagree with the interpretation of the Second Amendment. This has been etched in stone since our founding fathers created this document back in the 1700s. I agree with the whole heart of it. We just want to send a strong statement, a strong message to Annapolis that we want to declare Wycomico County as a Second Amendment sanctuary county, protecting the rights afforded to our citizens under the United States Constitution. But yet we're wrong for doing that? But all these lawyers in Annapolis, in Montgomery County, Baltimore County, Baltimore City, can declare their respective jurisdictions, their municipalities, sanctuary cities, preventing law enforcement from doing their job, violating federal law and state law, but that's okay?
Right. This resolution, which I think you wrote, says that as the Wycomico County government, we're going to oppose, if we adopt this, any restrictions by the Maryland General Assembly, you know, for the right to keep arms, any restrictions, we're going to oppose them by all available legal means. I mean, really?
Is this the final resolution you have, as you're reading through?
It's a resolution that's in front of us. Like I said, this whole resolution, Mike, is fraught with just, nothing's correct. Like I said, once again, you know, the whole Heller is taken out of context. George Mason's quoted here, but a quote that George Mason didn't make, by the way, you know, Mr. Taylor, our attorney, has already pointed that out, and that's taken out of context. And then the whole issue behind the Palladium of Liberty, once again, I think Mr. Taylor's on the Zoom, he can go, once again, he's the attorney, he can go into depth on that. But then, once we get into the whole items that are stated here, number one, it's, most of these are against the law, the charter for Wycomico County, and once again, as council people, we're violating our oaths if we do any of these items on here. So, I mean, you know, once again, it's not an issue of, like in my case, it's not an issue of, do I support the Second Amendment? I support the Second Amendment, but I support my job as a councilperson, and I don't determine the constitutionality of laws, plain and simple. I mean, we don't do that. And I don't pick sides. You know, I don't pick political agenda and say, "Oh, let's pass resolutions to support someone's political agenda." So that's not what we're here for. You know, I hate to say this, you know, we do dog laws and street signs and fund the budget. I mean, we're the legislative body of the council. We're not here to make, quote, "statements" and take people's sides on issues. That's not what we're here to do.
Bill, it doesn't say Wycomico County will oppose legislation. It says that Wycomico... County will oppose unconstitutional restrictions.
None of us are justices.
That's not in my document either. That's why I asked him to explain more.
It says Wycomico County will, I'm reading, will oppose unconstitutional, once again, who's determining that?
Well.
Restrictions by the Maryland General Assembly and the right to keep and bear arms through all available legal means.
Well, that's, that's a fair statement. If it's an unconstitutional restriction, why would we, why would we want to take?
Right. And we're, it's saying, and we're going to make that determination that it's unconstitutional.
No, no, it doesn't say we're going to make that determination. It says that if it's an unconstitutional.
Hold on, Nicole.
Yeah, if it's unconstitutional, John, it's going to get passed.
Hold on. Councilman Hastings?
Well, first of all, I'd say we could fix that one line there by saying Wycomico County will obey all constitutional law. We don't have to get all crazy in our language here. It's pretty simple. If you flip it on its head, that's what it is. So we could fix this doc. This is very, very poorly resolution, very poorly written resolution. The people on, of course, that are sitting at home have no idea what we're looking at because they don't have a way to even see what this resolution looks like. Am I correct on that too?
It was in the briefing material.
Are they able to access that online?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But we had one single person make a comment about the resolution.
Yeah, so what I think the sheriff is getting at, as we're saying, is what I'm hearing is that here in Wycomico County, you know, for those of us like myself, grew up on a farm, you, you understand how to use a weapon, a firearm. You learn those kinds of things early on. But I think what, what I'm hearing is in Wycomico County, this is something that we care about. And there are folks that are basically trying to take away more of our rights and more of our ability to, to, to be able to have access to firearms and more, you know, there's a lot more that we could, that we could say and say it much clearer than what is very poorly written in this, in this document here. But I think there is great purpose. I think there's great value. I don't doubt that all seven of us could be on board with saying that Wycomico County, this is that, you know, that we, you know, that we, we respect the Second Amendment in this county. You know, we could be much more straightforward with that. We don't have to go into the specifics on the things that we don't even have the authority to regulate. So, Mr. President, on that note, I think there, we, we could definitely come up with some better ways to amend this language, even shoot it, send it right back to the, to the sheriff's office or others and define better language so that we can have all of those.
This is a work session, so would you be willing to work on some different language to work with the sheriff and the attorneys?
Yeah, I think we could, yeah, we could all probably send around some languages.
A resolution?
Because I don't think there's a single member on this council that, that either doesn't have a background with guns or doesn't own guns or doesn't respect firearms. But to be able to, as Mr. McCain's pointing out, to be able to be as political in saying that we're going to impose constitutional, you know, restrictions, we don't know what that means. And furthermore, this is the state, you know, this is Wycomico County government. This isn't state of Maryland. This isn't the federal government. But we can send a message to be able to say that in here in Wycomico County, we respect the Second Amendment.
You know, Mr. President.
Ms. Ackley's been waiting. Can we go to her first?
That's good.
Ms. Ackley?
I, I just, I just want to recognize everyone's concerns. But I also realize why this is important. And to Mr. McCain's point, going to Annapolis is great. And I strongly encourage citizens to do that. But right now, our constituents have come to us and the buck stops here. I hear our constituents and I hear both sides. I recognize we need to stand up for our rights and stand up for the protection of families and stand up for Wycomico County. Ceremonial as it may be, let's do the right thing and protect and serve the county. And that's why we're here. And I strongly support what Ms. Councilman Hastings said is working together to maybe revise some language to make it acceptable for, for, for all of us to be comfortable with.
Mr. Cannon?
Mr. President, I assume that since this resolution came to us from the executive, that the county attorney reviews all documents and all resolutions before they come to the council table. So I would, I would think maybe we would need to talk the executive branch one more time here and say, has Mr. Wilbur reviewed this and does this have Mr. Wilbur's blessing? Because if it's on our table, if it's on our brief book, I've already assumed that yes, it has, it has, it has been tested, it's been reviewed, and our county attorney considers it a legal document.
That's the impression I got. And I do want to point out, in our packets, we have a memo from the executive's office stating the county executive supports Sheriff Lewis's request to designate Wycomico County a sanctuary amendment, a Second Amendment sanctuary county. So that is in our brief book in the executive.
I'm talking about the attorney's, I'm talking about the attorney's blessing.
Yeah, I'm just pointing out that the executive does support it. And it did come from his office where the county attorney is. Joe, did you have something else?
No.
What is the moment, anyway? Sheriff Lewis, how many counties in Virginia or Virginia, Maryland have sanctuary counties now?
A number have, or, I'm not sure exactly how many have passed thus far, but a number have passed and a number of other counties are on the agenda.
Yeah, I knew they were in, in the works. I know the last time I checked was six. There were three when we first started talking about it in December.
There were dozens that passed down in Virginia.
There was, I just looked, there's thirty.
Hundreds that have passed across the country.
Then in Virginia, there's 30 counties and three towns. So that's a statement there in itself. So thank you for that. Any more comments?
Mr. President?
Wait a minute, I hear somebody in the background.
Mr. Dodd, could I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've, I've turned in a, as you know, a memorandum on this. And Sheriff Lewis might want to look at it if he hasn't and to keep his blood pressure down, let me say, gun owner, and I'm not against the Second Amendment or any kind of, some sort of a resolution regarding it. But I think there's some real concerns with the provisions in this draft. And they're specified in the memo. I won't go over all of them, but the one that is particularly concerning is the paragraph two about imposing unconstitutional laws of the General Assembly by, I think it says something like all available legal means. That would essentially, that's more than symbolic, incidentally. I hear people keep saying, oh, this is just symbolic, doesn't mean anything. Well, it means a lot because it says you will do something. And if you can't be people of your word, then what are you? And secondly, the people who are supporting this all have different views about what it means. Many of them do not regard it as symbolic. You can tell that by the tone and to some extent, the substance of the public comments that are made. But let me turn to number two. That essentially says that the council is going to act as a court. And it's going to decide which laws are unconstitutional and which aren't before there's any adjudication, which frankly, I think is a foolish thing to do and is, is not in the legislative powers of the council in the charter. But if they're going to do that, if you decide you want to do that, then I would suggest you act as a court. And that is have people turn in legal memoranda on either side, read them, and make a decision before you do anything. Because who else is going to make the decision? You're going to have to do it. That's number one. Frankly, I think it would be better just to strike that out. And returning just for a moment to Mr. Hastings' comments, I agree. I think paragraph number one could be made much simpler by just striking out what's there and simply saying that the Wycomico County government shall not knowingly infringe the right to keep and bear arms in violation of the Second Amendment, period. That says it all. That's, that's your policy, to not do that. And I think those changes, as far as the declarations, would, would help it awfully lot. Now, some of the whereas clauses, I think, need to be adopted, particularly the clause about Heller. That's just not a correct generalization about the holding in Heller. Heller actually held that a law passed in the District of Columbia to outlaw handguns in homes violated the Second Amendment. That's the holding in Heller. Now, there's a lot of other discussion. Part of it is summarized there in, in the text. But if you're going to make a general statement about Heller, then you have to add, but that right is not unlimited. Because that's what they said in Heller. And that's what they came back two years later and said in McDonald. And that's, that's the law. It's not an unlimited right. Sheriff Lewis referred to the First Amendment. That's not an unlimited right. You can't cry fire in a theater. I mean, that's, that's adage that's been around for years. There's certainly limitations on the First Amendment, just like there is in every amendment. They're all subject to it. And that's what Judge Scalia said in Heller. So I think that this needs a lot more than just tweaking. It needs substantive change, particularly in regard to the, the two paragraphs that are in the declarations. Thank you.
Councilman Hastings?
Yep.
Go ahead.
If we, if we change the paragraph that you suggested, would you be comfortable?
Nicole, can you say that again?
If we change the verb.
Nicole, you're freezing up on us.
Does she have chat?
No, I'm sorry.
Does she have chat?
Councilwoman Ackley, I can't, you're breaking up a little bit and I can't, can't fully hear you. But I do, I think I know where you're going with it. And you're basically getting at, is there ways that we can amend this to make it look better and to have all of us on, on board and support? And I think, I think the answer is yes, in that sense. I, I've already got some ideas in mind, just from listening to all the folks here, ways that we can make this a strong statement to say that all of us are in favor of Second Amendment, but also to be able to have all of us on board. And, and Mr. President, the last thing I'll say on that is, I think it also is important to say, we do, we do need to have a better, you know, every other association from every other group, whether you're agriculture, education, you name it, they have a, a pretty good groups that can lobby. And we need to do a better job with that when it comes to go into Annapolis or more importantly, challenging something in court. You know, we've definitely had a lot of passionate folks have reached out. And this is a, a time when a lot of folks are uneasy. But I don't doubt that we can find, not only make a strong statement, but also maybe put together some, a better framework going forward so that, you know, our voices are better heard around the rest of the state and, and country.
Right. I would like the council attorney and the county attorney to work out their differences, because it's interesting that there's, seems to be two opposing views on this document.
As much as I'm around attorneys, that's not interesting at all. They get paid to litigate cases all the time. Mr. Taylor certainly has his interpretive views on what this document says.
That's correct.
And Paul Wilber has his interpretive views of what the document says. I can tell you that this resolution right here pales in comparison to what I had originally submitted. What I had originally submitted. This pales in comparison. This was formally done, and the final product, as you see, formally done by Mr. Wilber's office. When they sent it to me, I liked it. And I approved it. And I said, I will go with it.
Yeah, well, the, all the whereas's are incorrect, so they need to be stricken.
But this pales in comparison to the document that I had originally submitted as the resolution should be passed in this county.
And like Mr. Hastings said, you know, and Mr. Taylor said the same thing, one sentence kind of sums it up. We support the Second Amendment. I mean, you know, the, the whereas fluff in there, which is, you know, and then the, you know, the, the, I'm making sure what you call it, the last part of it, especially like number two, you know, I mean, we can't even do that. You know, I mean, that's, you know, that needs to be, be struck. So.
You know, attorneys get paid to argue law. They get paid to litigate law. At the district court, at the circuit court, at the appeals court, special court of appeals court, and United States Supreme Court. They get paid to argue all day long. And they truly feel that their interpretation of the law is the right interpretation. Ultimately, a judge will decide. But as you said, Mr. McCain, we don't determine the constitutionality of a law. We don't determine that at all. What we're trying to do here is send a strong statement to Annapolis that we recognize the importance of the Second Amendment to our people that hold us accountable here in this, in this county.
No, I mean, that's, that's a sentence that needs, that's what, that's what the resolution needs to be.
Once it gets said.
Right. And I say, it doesn't need the incorrect information. It's not, Mr. Taylor's not, it's not his interpretation.
Well, you can rest assured, this information was correct to Mr. Wilber's attorneys who drafted this document, sent it to me for my approval.
Well, no, he's quoting it. So, you know, whether, I don't know who's incorrect here, you know, whoever wrote this.
Any more comments?
I would just offer one thing, Mr. Dodd, Mr. Taylor, again.
Yes, sir.
I'm not making a legal interpretation, particularly on that paragraph two. That is a practical matter. That is going to put the council into the middle of a dispute on every single statute that comes out of the General Assembly having to do with guns or gun control. Because there's going to be one side on, one side of it and another. And you're going to be in the middle on each and every one. It's what I refer to as a political and legal briar patch. And I don't think you want to get into that.
Okay. Mr. Holloway? Mr. Holloway first?
I want to take us back about six or seven years ago. I can't remember the year. But we were talking about states of emergency. And there was legislation sent over, this is when, this was our prior county executive, that would have given the county executive, and I don't know whether it was done intentionally, and I don't want to say it was done intentionally. I think it was probably overlooked, but basically said that no homeowner could own any explosive devices in a state of emergency. And I think there was something in the legislation about the county executive had the powers to, do you remember that, John? Were you hearing that? I remember Matt was here and Matt showed it to me. I don't think it ever really ever got to the council table. But, and I looked at it and I said, well, Matt, I said, that means guns. Bullets are explosive. He said, yeah, that's the problem with it. And inadvertently, and I think that's why it ended up there. I think it was inadvertently put in there and it was meant that nobody could own a bomb, which nobody's not supposed to own anybody, or Donimway or whatever. But inadvertently, that was put in that legislation that no homeowner under a state of emergency could own any kind of explosive device. Well, bullet is explosive. And that would have meant that under the state of, where we're at right today, that the government could have confiscated the guns of the people of Wycomico County if that had passed. So that's where you have to be careful with this stuff, when you get the wrong stuff in a.
Ms. Ackley, do you have another comment?
I can't remember what it was. Oh, no, I went, I, okay, I remember. So what, what is the process for if we want to amend this? Do we take a vote to table it until the next meeting?
Well, this is a work session.
Okay.
We'll let Mr. Taylor and Mr. Wilber hash it out.
All right. Mr. Cannon suggested that the two attorneys take the time to hash it out and resubmit it to us. Would you be willing to come back, Mr. Sheriff?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. There's no more discussion. We'll move on that one.
Stay safe, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you, Bill.
Appreciate what you do for the county, Michael.
What's that?
Appreciate what you do for the county.
Thank you, sir. My pleasure. May I honor my wife, Todd, to be honest with you.
All right. Need a motion to go into closed work session?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.